Good afternoon and welcome to this hearing of the Budget and Finance Committee for Monday, July 31, 2017. We do have a quorum. I'm Paul Krieger, Chair of the Committee, joined by my colleagues, Mr. Englander and Mr. Bonin, and we're ready to begin. Well, we have some general public comment cards, so, I mean, agenda public comment cards. So, members, I would have recommended seven, 10, 11, and 12 for consent approval. We'll go ahead and take the cards so that we can deal with those matters. So, why don't we go ahead and call up Mr. Previn first to comment on his matters as well as general public comment. Mr. Previn?
This is on all items. Yes, seven, 10, 11, and 12 is what I, yeah. Mr. Previn, good afternoon.
Right, so I'm going to address the items initially and then I'll get a minute on general public comment. Thank you. It's Eric Previn from CD2.
Sorry, sorry. The first two minutes, wait, hold, Mr. Eng.
Pause.
So, it's three minutes total, so two minutes, however, two minutes on your agenda items and one minute on general public.
It's not three minutes on all the items, it's two?
It's three minutes total, including the general public comment. So, two minutes on any agenda item, yeah.
Okay. It's Eric Previn from CD2 or Studio City, and I will start with what I think is really the most important, which is the reappointment of Richard Llewellyn as interim CAO. It's Mayor Garcetti, I believe, who's making this action. You're going to recommend it. You know, Llewellyn has been an insider at City Hall for a very long time. He started, I believe, actually over at, working for Ed Adelman, and then he migrated to work for Mr. Garcetti, Gil Garcetti, and then he's been a city attorney chief deputy. He's been, he was the mayor's lead attorney in the mayor's office. He worked for Paul Coretz in CD in 2009 when he was getting elected there. That's when Arash Amampour gave money to Mike Fuer. He worked for Mike Fuer, and, you know, so now for him to take over as the CAO on a temporary basis was understood to be temporary. Now, we're going to extend it further. I was hoping for fresh eyes, to be completely clear. I respect Mr. Llewellyn a great deal, but he is the man who presided over the judgment-obligation bond confusion and murkiness. He is the man who presided over the Prop K, "We are not taking comments from the floor" component. He is the man who has refused to make audio recordings of HHH meetings, both the civilian oversight piece and the administrative oversight piece, public, which of course is a terrible blow to the public who are trying desperately to provide public scrutiny and oversight over those important matters. So, I would just simply say, ask the mayor to make this a short temporary extension and find somebody who can provide the kind of top-down leadership that maybe Mr. Llewellyn would be compromised at this time. Item number 11, just a point of order, you have, DOT was left off of the headline for the account receivables that you'll be not pursuing or pursuing in different ways. DOT has a $9.9 million difficult ones to collect, and apparently you've got Harrison Harris and other agents going after that. So, it makes the other smaller numbers, it dwarfs them, quite frankly. There was another one for HCI DLA, which was also quite over a million dollars, and that was, I was glad to see that they're not pursuing any further collections. Those are for people who can't make the rent, and so on and so forth. Item number 12, I see Blumenfeld is not here for the record, but I know that this is about providing a van, another van. We provided one last week. This one is for a group called the Victims of Human Trafficking. I approve of it. I don't want Englander to impound it. When these vehicles wind up on the side of the road, we have to be very cautious. I know Blumenfeld was arranging so that the poopies in the motorhomes could be carefully removed so that they could take away those vehicles as well from Bonin's district and everybody else's district. It is upsetting that we are not providing spots in parking lots appropriately for these groups who can't find a place to live. There are hundreds, possibly 1,000 people in LA, possibly more, possibly 5,000, who are living in their vehicles, and it's not by choice, obviously. It is very upsetting. Now, is it time for general public comment?
No, that was the full three minutes. All right. Thank you. That brings up Mr. Herman.
So, on item 10, as you see, what the development between Mexico and the United States is Trump. We don't want or need no fucking sanctuary cities when you have Americans sleeping on the goddamn street. No one's asked you to create road congestions and road hazards when it comes to building a fucking wall. This is my America. I'll make America great again with Trump, and fuck you, white niggers. And then I go to items number what? Oh, look, it's the Public Works Bureau sanitation, but I'm not going to be on item 11. Let me go on to item one. Yes, no one gets to say what's fucking offensive speech, bitches, under the Ralph and Brown Act. Free speech and free assembly is an appropriate way of conducting the city of Los Angeles' business when it comes to having the police department. Yeah, the matter arises from incidents involving the police department. Yeah, you should just pay off all these people on their settlements. Isn't that the way Los Angeles runs? You know, we need more police officers to disrupt our lives by harassment, sexual harassment, discrimination, and even better, under issues involving traffic accidents like the one off of Coanga Boulevard. You should pay them double the amount in CD4. And then I go back to the real point of what general public comment's all about. So, when we talk about Michael Hunt's constitutional rights violated by the Transportation Authority, Metro, and that of myself, or denied censorship because you find our speech offensive? I don't find it offensive. I'm under general public comment, fool.
Can you hold this time for a minute, Mr. Eng?
That's why the Supreme Court.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with the jurisdiction of the Budget and Finance Committee. You can take it up with Metro. If you want to speak to the Budget and Finance Committee about budget and finance matters, do so. Otherwise, you're done.
All the guidelines and all the meanings behind all these fuckings has to do with the guidelines of the budget. All the guidelines, because everything that comes down to the Jewish money involves the budget. If you don't pay for the meaning and the guidelines, and better, the city policy and the city activism participation, it all comes to the money of the budget. So, what you're going to pay up, bitch, under a settlement, it comes out of the budget. Anything and everything that's offensive comes out of a settlement, comes from the budget. That's why the Supreme Court on the Ninth Circuit ruled, I could say, fuck you, Goldman Paul Kriegerian and your fucking amnesty nation.
Public comment, you're done, Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, you're disrupting the meeting. Please ask Mr. Herman to leave. All right, you're continuing to disrupt the meeting, Mr. Herman. You've been asked, you've been instructed to leave.
What?
You've been instructed to leave the room. You're disrupting the meeting. You continue to disrupt the meeting. You're on your way out, and you'll be quiet as you leave.
I'm leaving.
All right, public comment is closed. General public comment is closed. Public comment on all matters is closed. Members, is there any comment or question on items 7, 10, 11, or 12? For the record, Mr. Herman continues to disrupt the meeting as he leaves. He's making animal noises that are not coming from his little doggy, but from him himself. All right, members, anything else on items 7, 10, 11, and 12? Mr. Blumenfeld has joined us. We've concluded public comment on these agenda items. Mr. Blumenfeld and I'd recommend 7, 10, 11, and 12 for consent approval. And with item number 10, we would actually be concurring in the action of the Ad Hoc Committee on Immigrant Affairs and approve the motion. And if there's no objection, that will be the action of the committee on items 7, 10, 11, and 12. Public comment on all of our closed-session items is closed. Public comment on items eight and nine is closed. General public comment is closed. That brings us to our closed-session items, and we will proceed in order unless the city attorney has a request for priority. And we'll go ahead and move to the other rooms so members of the public and everyone else can stay. All right, we are back in open session, and just for the sake of the record, Mr. Krutz joined us in closed session and was participating in the closed-session matters as well. Item two was continued, if that wasn't clear previously. So, that brings us then to item number eight.
Item number eight is a city attorney report relative to coordination in the office of the city attorney of the Administrative Citation Enforcement, Proposition 47, Proposition D, Citywide Nuisance Abatement and Neighborhood Prosecutor Programs.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for your patience.
Hi, I'm Mary Claire Molitor. I'm chief of the Criminal and Special Litigation Branch in the city attorney's office. I think you all received my report. Otherwise, I'll summarize it for you. She asks how these five programs are coordinated within the city attorney's office. All five of these are staffed by personnel assigned to the criminal branch. In turn, the prosecutors are then assigned on a geographic basis to the LAPD divisions. And that applies to all four programs, Prop 47, Prop D, Citywide Nuisance Abatement Program, and the Neighborhood Prosecutor Program. ACE is not assigned by division because it's only one attorney, so she gets the whole city. But in essence, what we have done is put together, we have databases for these various programs that are shared with the prosecutors, and then the prosecutors work together collaboratively depending on where the cases are coming from, the divisions. So, it's very, it's been very seamless, and I'm very appreciative of the staff that was given to us. Thank you for funding those.
Well, thank you, and this report came up during our budget process, and I, as I recall, I think we were interested in how, whether cost efficiencies were being realized by these different programs and having them be focused in a way that made sense to utilize the resources cost efficiently. And it sounds as though you've put a lot of focus on, your office has put a lot of focus on doing exactly that, and this is what I was sort of hoping to hear in this.
Yes, our whole shift with branch operations and the specialized programs is instead of having these, what we would call siloed programs, is that it's much more neighborhood-based.
Yeah.
And so, they get to know the geography, they get to know the police officers, the field deputies, and other agency personnel.
And having now a full contingent of neighborhood prosecutors, I hope, has been helpful and fulfilled.
Very helpful. They're very much our link to alert us to a lot of issues at a very early stage, so that's been very helpful.
Are there areas within these programs that you feel there's still significant gaps that need to be addressed, or does it seem like, you mentioned it's working pretty seamlessly among the programs, but are there areas that are being neglected, while some are being seamlessly handled, other areas are being neglected? Maybe neglect is the wrong word, but, you know, aren't adequate resources to be able to.
I think one area that we'd probably like to get back to on is the Administrative Citation Enforcement Program, because just in the last year, the number of citations issued by LAPD has doubled, and as we add additional agencies, it's very important that we do a lot of in-depth training with the personnel before they roll out the citation program.
Members, questions on this? Mr. Blumenfeld?
Yeah, two things. On the, on Prop 47, we were applying for money for that to set that up. Is that from the city attorney's department?
Yes, after Prop 47 was implemented, city council funded eight prosecutors and seven support staff, and we've assigned them to the various branch operations to handle the incoming caseload that we, formerly was handled by the district attorney's office. Additionally, we just were awarded a $6 million grant from the state from the Prop 47 monies that we're using to set up, it's what I would call a kind of health-based harm reduction initiative, because what we have found is that experimenting, we set up a pilot program in Southwest Division based upon Project LEAD, Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion, that was out of Seattle. It didn't work very well, primarily because we're such a large city, Southwest is quite large, and we have such a transient homeless population, obviously transient, but with the police, where they weren't always going back to the same place. And so, what we proposed and were funded for was a mobile outreach services where we will have a licensed vocational nurse, mental health clinicians, and a peer navigator, and we'll fund two cars and a van. And we're identifying, we're starting out with five hotspot locations where there's overlap between homeless encampments and narcotics arrests, with the thought that they will continually go out there, establish that bond, the trust. Additionally, it'll have a 24/7 hotline for LAPD officers to use, so that when they do come across individuals that they believe are greatly in need of just a whole lot of services, they'll contact our service providers.
That's only one area?
Well, we're, we've got our first advisory committee meeting this week, but it is targeting five areas in South LA. But we hope to show that it works and go back and get more funds.
Yeah, I guess, well, maybe not here, but I want to learn more about that, how that plays with loss of fund, you know, all the regular funding that we go, it's, obviously has a city attorney. It's not just a service program that's run by the city attorney's office, there's a prosecutorial element.
Yes, it will fund one prosecutor and one administrative coordinator, because along with this kind of outreach to intervene before these individuals even come into the criminal justice system, we have quite a few that do come into the system. And we've had such a high failure-to-appear rate on our drug offenders that we've set up a court navigator program, so that when an individual is amenable to going into treatment, instead of being, say, come back to court in 30 days, go to such-and-such location and talk to this case manager, we've moved those individuals right into the courthouse. So, we've had that program in downtown LA, and we're about to start in, out in the Valley.
Basically, a diversion?
Right, court navigator program, yes.
When is that starting in the Valley?
Hopefully, mid-August. Keep my fingers crossed.
Where in the Valley?
Well, it'll be out of the Van Nuys courthouse.
And it'll be a diversion program that all the officers, that all the prosecutors can use?
Yes.
Great, I definitely want to learn more about that. And then on the Prop D unit, the, are they, obviously, that whole world is changing, right? We're, we're sort of prosecuting Prop D right now as a vestige, but come January, we're under a new regime, which is hopefully permitting rather than limited immunity.
Right.
And it completely turns this on its head. Are we gearing up for that, or how is that, how does that fit in with what's going to happen, fit in with what's happening?
We're more or less looking at that same timeframe to figure out how exactly it will change and what will be put in place in LA. But I think even with a permitting process, you will have a lot of locations that have opened up or will open up illegally.
It'll just be a different, it'll be a different game, so to speak, than the Prop D world has been.
Yes.
But these are big subjects, and I'm just touching on them because they're in the report.
Yes, we've been trying to monitor pre-Prop D, post-Prop D, and now we'll go into another era.
Mr. Eng.
If I could, thanks for putting this together. I had some questions on the Prop 47. This has got to be one of the biggest shifts to the city attorney's office since the creation of the city attorney's office.
Yes.
Most of the major drug felonies now being misdemeanors now coming directly to your office.
Yes.
And also, I think, one of the biggest increases in not only crime and homelessness issues and everything that goes into a drug addiction and mental health issues stem from some piece of 47. Not, that's not opinion, that I think is fact. I mean, in fact, we were supposed to get a lot of money from the state of California under 47 and as a result of 109. That never truly emerged. We started getting, I think, some funds. Do you, have you been, has the office been tracking data on 47 specifically?
Yes.
And do you have, is there any kind of report or shareable data to date that you can present on that?
Yes, I can go back to the office. We've, in fact, right after Prop 47 was implemented, city attorney, city attorney Fuer put together a pretty expansive work group with, you know, Sheriff Jimmy McDonald, DA Jackie Lacy, Charlie Beck, everyone coming to the table because we were seeing the impact of Prop 47 on the city. We've been tracking statistically, like in the last five months, we've had a little over 2,200 drug cases reviewed by our filing deputies. Our bigger concern is, once the case is filed, what happens to it?
Right.
Drug court enrollment has just plummeted.
We can no longer mandate it.
Nothing. There's, you know, the feeling is that without that kind of incentive that you're looking at state prison, that you're not going to plead up to a misdemeanor offense where you're required to go to treatment. So, we've been working with the county public health department, and they've designed a 12- to 16-week diversion program for individuals who do enter a plea in the criminal courts. But again, we are struck by incredibly high bench warrant rate on our drug offenders, including people who pled to Prop 36 or deferred entry of judgment, therefore agreed to go into treatment. Their bench warrant rate was actually higher, it was about 75%. So, we're trying to intercept at various points of, with this health-based approach with LAPD when they are making arrests, where they can make calls, and then post-filing. But it's been a struggle.
One of the things that I've been trying to figure out is ways that we can help beyond resources, although resources are needed. And maybe that just merits a whole nother discussion for another time, but soon. So, if you do have those numbers and can actually spend some time coming forth, I think perhaps I'll just entertain the idea of putting forth a motion for a discussion of how we're dealing with it.
Sure, I can come individually to your offices, because it's kind of in the weeds type of information.
Well, I think I'd rather do it. Yeah, okay, I'll take you up on that, but then also, I think a public discussion would be great.
Okay.
That would help gear up for the public discussion.
And then if you'd like, I can email copies of our Prop 47 application that was approved, where we were awarded the $6 million.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Mr. Krutz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One question, and I've raised this directly to the city attorney as well. I've been getting some complaints, and I don't know if any of my colleagues have gotten similar complaints, that they're pre-Ico dispensaries, they're getting prosecuted for pretty much what you would consider ticky-tack violations. In the most extreme example, someone who had a violation of paperwork because they were sent the wrong paperwork and filled it out, and when they were informed that they had to fill the right paperwork out and they owed some additional taxes, they paid it. So, they actually literally did everything the city asked, and they were, they were shut down and criminally prosecuted. I would think that's absolutely not what was ever intended by Prop D. I know whenever we have a discussion of legislative intent, people always say, well, it's not the legislative intent, it's whatever is black and white there, which says, any kind of violation of any kind, and you could be prosecuted. But in reality, it certainly wasn't the legislative intent, and I can't speak to Bill Rosendahl, who's not with us anymore, but I, I believe that neither of us would have ever in our wildest dreams wanted such prosecutions to be taken place, or ever envisioned that that could happen. So, why are we doing that when there are literally hundreds of blatantly illegal, intentionally law-violating dispensaries that have no justification for being there? Why are we going after folks that have made the most minor inconsequential, and in some cases like this one, unavoidable mistakes?
Well, I can't answer that without reviewing the case file, but I'm happy to look at that, because we've got, you know, one prosecutor assigned to each of the four LAPD bureaus, and then one prosecutor handling our civil abatement work. But I'll be glad to follow up on that, because I've reviewed quite a few of the cases, and none of them struck me as ticky-tack. I think somewhere in the middle lies the truth, so I'd have to review the file.
Yeah, I'm not sure you could find a more extreme example than this one. I'm very familiar with it, and it's in my district, and I, for the life of me, have no idea why it's being prosecuted.
All right.
But that's, you wouldn't consider that a general, would you consider that a general policy to prosecute any violation, no matter what the circumstances?
No, no. We're prioritizing based upon the proximity of the marijuana dispensary to schools, parks, and community complaints.
No community complaints, community support for the dispensary?
Again, you kind of got me in an awkward position, because I don't know the case personally, so I'd have to review it.
But if that were, everything I described were the case, you wouldn't consider that a high priority, I would presume.
Yeah, lawyer, I'm not going to answer till I look at the evidence, so.
Okay, well, we'll follow up on that. Thank you.
Mr. Bonin?
Thanks. I've known MC for close to 20 years. I knew you weren't going to wrap her into that. Good to see you. We miss you in West LA.
You too. West LA.
I bet. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the ACE program. You're familiar with my district, as you know.
Yes.
This is a community that was eager for the ACE program. I saw in the report, there's one attorney. How are they handling what I assume is a pretty big list of things to deal with?
Well, they, they've got a lot of support staff, well, not a lot, but they've got a paralegal administrative coordinator and a legal secretary, and technically, the prosecution part doesn't come in until the person is, basically, wants to appeal it. And so, then our prosecutor reviews that citation to determine, no, that's a legitimate citation, or, you know what, he's got a criminal record, this has happened before, it should go a misdemeanor route. Deputy City Attorney Rita Venegas is a supervising attorney. I really have to hand it to her, because she was reviewing every single citation that was issued, regardless of whether they were asking for an appeal.
Wow.
Mainly to put in really tight quality controls from the get-go.
Yeah.
So, with a couple of the agencies, we're now trying to kind of move it to the original, you know, basically, how it's spelled out in the ordinance. But it is a program that I think has worked very, very well, and I was just surprised where she told me that LAPD has doubled the issuance of citations in a year. I think it's, it's an area, because right now, we've got LAPD, LA Fire Department, Bureau of Street Services, Racks and Parks, and Animal Services are all participants. I think as we expand that, that we need to look at the incoming, so that we.
Yeah, I wanted, it's, what, is it two years now, since we've had ACE? Is it?
I believe so, yes.
About that? I was wondering what the process is. Is it something you bring forward? Is it something we initiate by motion to consider whether or not to expand to other departments and figure out what the resources?
I'm hearing my executive management, so I've got to talk to them first. But just, you know, as the chief of the criminal branch, as I'm monitoring data from our various programs, that's an area that, one, I think is important, because you can pull cases out of the criminal justice system for really minor offenses where you don't want to put a, what I call, electronic tail on individuals.
Right.
It's handled like a ticket. We also have built a bridge between ACE, Administrative Citation Enforcement Program, with our Neighborhood Justice Program, because oftentimes, we have individuals who can't pay that $250 fine. So, we'll refer them to our Neighborhood Justice Program where they part- So, we'll refer them to our Neighborhood Justice Program, where they participate in a, it's a panel with three community members and a facilitator, and they talk about the offense, the harm done to the community, and then they come up with a restorative justice obligation, which is typically community service.
Yeah. All right, I'd like to talk to you more offline about ACE and how it's working, whether or not we should expand. Thanks.
Mr. Kreitz?
Yeah, unless I missed a consent calendar item somewhere, it got expanded from Animal Services and LAPD to those other categories without our approval. Not that I object, I think it's great.
I think these all went through council.
If they did, they were very quiet and unnoticed. One thing I'd like to flag is that we not add building and safety till we've had more of a broad-ranging discussion, because I think there are certainly some building and safety items that I think are still controversial, even though they're on the books, such as over-height fences and bushes. Those tend to be just resources for neighbors to attack each other, and actually have no real practical implications, so I'm not sure we want to do massive enforcement on that without another look. And there are a couple of other building and safety issues that are similar. So, I'd encourage that they be very carefully flagged and carefully heard in committee before we move that one forward.
Will do.
Any further members?
Just one last note on that, that is a conversation we should have, because I can imagine there are parts of the city where someone is using the front yard as a junkyard, or storing a lot of auto vehicles, and that might be something Building and Safety would be engaged in then, and we certainly wouldn't want to slow down any stuff on that. So, it's a conversation we probably have soon then.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we want to identify which particular violations we'd want Building and Safety to go after, and which ones we'd want to reserve for a policy debate before we do.
Right, which is the process we've been doing with the other agencies, was give us a list of the citations you'd like added to ACE, to see whether it's appropriate. So, we'll do the same.
Are the prosecutors in the nuisance abatement program, are they assigned to do nuisance evictions as well, where there's drug crimes or gun crimes occurring in rental housing?
Yes, there's thirteen prosecutors currently assigned to the citywide nuisance abatement program. And again, they're assigned by divisions, with some of them handling, obviously, more than one division. Again, they're prioritizing the gang and violent crime locations, but they also utilize the eviction remedy when appropriate.
Great, thank you. All right, if there's nothing further, members, we'll note and file that report with our thanks and appreciation.
Thank you.
And that'll bring up item number nine.
Item number nine is a city administrative officer report relative to a list of federal funding received by the city that could potentially be threatened as a result of the Trump administration's statements related to immigration enforcement, and by proposed cuts to the federal budget for the fiscal year 2018. On June twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, the Ad Hoc Committee on Immigrant Affairs and Civil Rights noted and filed the CAO report.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Yolanda Chavez with the CAO's office. I'm joined today by Nick Campbell, also with the CAO's office. The report before you responds to three motions related to the federal funding received by the city, and the potential impact of the proposed fiscal year 2018 federal budget. Nick will start our presentation by reviewing the findings from the federal funding exercise the CAO conducted for fiscal year sixteen-seventeen, and then I will briefly review the proposed federal budget and its potential impact on the city.
Great, thank you. Again, I'm Nick Campbell at the CAO's office. Earlier this year, our office released a memo requesting departments to provide information on federal funding that they received or were actively utilizing in 2016-seventeen. We put this, compiled this information to a single database, and that was used to form the basis of our analysis of federal funding within, across the entire city. Just a note, that the information provided in our report represents the best estimates as reported by departments. And just another note, we included Losa and Hackla as part of this, while they're not city departments, they are really part of the city family, and provide some very crucial services. Just quickly, some of the key findings from this exercise were that in 2016-seventeen, in that fiscal year, we received or were actively utilizing about one-point-six billion dollars' worth of federal funds, as reported by departments. This funding included various types of federal grants, reimbursement programs, multi-year capital projects, and really ran the gamut of the services that are provided by the city. Another note is, this federal funding provided support to about seven-hundred-and-eighty positions, or about four-hundred-and-eighteen full-time equivalent positions, and three-hundred-and-two of these are civil service positions. Additionally, if we include Losa and Hackla's funding, it's an additional one-point-two billion, just for those two departments alone, or agencies alone, and that would bring the total federal funding for both city departments, Losa and Hackla, to two-point-eight billion in sixteen-seventeen. City services that receive the most federal funding, it's in five categories, street and highway transportation, capital projects, crime control and public safety, environmental quality, and human services, with the two largest by far being street and highway transportation and capital projects. And the most, we also evaluated which departments would be most impacted. At the time we started this memo, there was a concern that we might have, lose all federal funds, and as part of that, we asked departments to provide estimates as to what the impact would be if all federal funding were gone, in the worst-case scenario, so we could really get a gauge of, you know, what we're trying to fight against, and what the worst case could be. The five departments that reported, we found had, would have the highest impact is EWDD, Economic and Workforce Development Department, AGING, Emergency Management Department, Office of the Mayor, and the Housing and Community Investment Department, and it's in that order in terms of projected impact. And that was just a comparison of the total federal funding that they put, or that they reported for salaries compared to their 2016-seventeen budget. The larger percentages being Economic and Workforce Development Department being the highest, fifty-eight percent. And then finally, I just wanted to go over briefly the attachments that summarize in greater detail the information that we have. And just note, too, that I have the database, so I have the laptop here, so if you have any specific questions, I can try and answer those quickly. Quickly, though, attachment one is the federal funding by city department, and then it also includes the proposed fiscal year 2018 federal budget, or at least it's proposed by the Trump administration. And this shows all of the grants as reported, as well as the federal department that they're linked with, and the items that are highlighted, if you have a color copy, it would be in yellow, if not, it's just in gray, are programs that are at least proposed to be eliminated in the administration's budget. And then attachment two provides a summary of the federal funding operational impact. Again, as I mentioned before, we'd asked departments to provide information on what they believe the anticipated impact would be of losing federal funds, and they provided information that we summarized here, most importantly, I think, on the amount of positions that they believe would be impacted. Again, just to note, these are what departments are, their best estimates. And another note quickly is the Department of Transportation, Street Services, and Bureau of Engineering, they're listed together, they reported together for the Metro Annual Work Plan, so they had one submission, and that's why that was done that way. And then attachment three, there were two versions, just as a note, hopefully everyone has an updated version, if not, I have copies. It should show, as well as by department and city sub-function, their funding amounts for DOJ and Department of Homeland Security grants, but it should also show whether it's DOJ or DHS. If you don't have that version, I have a copies for you. And this shows similar information to attachment two, but specific to departments that received grants from DOJ or DHS, as that seems to be the focus lately in terms of grant funding that's at risk. And now, I'll turn it over to Yolanda to speak on that federal grant.
Great, so in terms of the proposed federal budget for fiscal year 2018, as you know, the Trump administration releases their proposal on May twenty-third. The one-point-one-five trillion-dollar budget prioritizes public safety, increasing the budgets for the military, immigration enforcement, and veteran affairs. These increases are offset by more than fifty-four billion in reductions, and in some cases, eliminations of key anti-poverty programs, including housing, healthcare, and education. As Nick noted, those programs that are proposed for elimination are highlighted in yellow in attachment one. Again, some of the key departments that would be the most impacted by the proposed federal budget would be H-CID, EWDD, and AGING. Another area of concern in the budget is, or is a proposed amendment to Section 642 of the Illegal Immigration Reform and Immigrant Responsibility Act of nineteen-ninety-six. This amendment, among other changes, conditioned grants awarded by Department of Justice and Homeland Security to states or jurisdictions to ensure that the recipient agrees to share information on individuals, and individuals in custody, and those that are suspected of a violation of law. This information would include the person's nationality, citizenship, immigration status, removable ability, scheduled date and time of release, home address, work address, or contact information. It would also force the jurisdiction to ensure that their employees collect this information, collect this information, or not restrict the collection of this information. And the jurisdiction would also have to comply with any lawful request made by Department of Homeland Security, including the request to maintain custody of an individual for a period not to exceed forty-eight hours, in order to permit assumption of custody by Homeland Security. So, this amendment, if it were to be approved, the city would have to certify compliance and any application for funding for DOJ or DHS, and the resulting award agreement. The departments that would be impacted by this type of amendment would be the Emergency Management Department, the Los Angeles Police Department, the city attorney, and the mayor's office. These departments received approximately one-hundred-and-eighteen million from DOJ and DHS as, in the last fiscal year, as illustrated in attachment three of our reports.
Just for point of clarification, you said would be impacted, instead of could be, is that, or if we're in compliance with that section?
Well, if the amendment is actually approved within the budget. So, this amendment to the law is included within the budget proposal.
Right, right. Just to piggyback on that.
Well, actually, if you, just hold on one second, because were you, are you done? Because I want to, I think we're going to have some discussion about that issue, but go ahead.
Also, although the city is not the direct recipient, of course, of Medicaid, the proposed change to the structure of Medicaid to a block grant by fiscal year 2020 would have a tremendous adverse impact on the city's homeless efforts. I wanted to stress, of course, that this is a proposed budget, and Congress is currently working on the various appropriation bills, and at least from the early work, and some of the appropriation bills that have been released, they do not reflect the reductions in the administration's proposed budget. So, that's some good news there. As you know, Congress has to agree on a budget by October first. If they do not agree, they, the government either, you know, would shut down, or they would pass what you call continuing resolution, which, or CR, which basically funds the federal government at fiscal 2017 funding levels. I wanted to note that Congress has had to pass a continuing resolution every year since nineteen-seventy-seven, with the exception of four years. Finally, although it is unlikely that the proposed cuts in the fiscal year 2018 federal budget will be approved, it would be difficult for the city to fill any gap if there is a major federal cut to any of these key programs. The city would have to assess whether we need to discontinue services and programs currently funded with federal dollars, or identify new funding sources for these programs, such as cannabis tax, billboard program, and the linkage fee. So, with that, we're available to answer any of your questions.
Great, so I, thank you for this. We've been wanting to have this information before us, this is very valuable to have this kind of in-depth look, and I think the upshot of it is that for many years, for as long as I've been on the council, the city has been trying to keep up with cuts in federal fundings, by funding, by backfilling programs that are critical in the city to our most vulnerable residents. And that's become kind of the norm for us to try to catch up with those cuts, so that our constituents, the people who live here, who are most dependent upon those services, are not left without sometimes lifesaving services, meals for seniors, aid to people living with HIV. In so many areas, there are people who would be devastated, whose lives would be devastated by these federal cuts, but for the actions of the city council. And even before we get to the beginning of any discussion about compliance with the administration's demands about immigration laws, even before we get to that discussion, the proposed cuts in budget that this administration has talked about would so devastate so many areas of fundamental service to our people, that there's no way that this city could expect to be able to make up for it. And that's just in terms of service to vulnerable Angelenos. When it comes to so many areas that are the purported policy objectives of this administration, like you mentioned, public safety, which is, in theory, one of this administration's priorities, but we're going to suffer cuts to port security, to service to domestic violence victims, to DNA analysis, to so many things that are sort of fundamental to crime fighting and public safety right here, because of the administration's proposed cuts in federal funding. Then when you add to that the threats and the extortion that this administration is trying to commit against cities throughout America because of their immigration policies, it not only puts us and our residents here in a terribly vulnerable position, but it also is counterproductive to the very policies that the administration is promoting, in my view. So, that being said, this report was, it's dated in June, we've had some scheduling issues in getting you here, but as happens in so many other areas these days, a lot happens in a short amount of time in Washington these days. And so, we now have a House Budget Committee report out of the House of Representatives, which is very different than what the president's proposed budget was. We have these new requirements that you, I think, were alluding to, that Attorney General Sessions was announcing, that are new, and those are not contained in the report. So, I would ask that we have a follow-up report that analyzes the House Budget Committee's budget, and also the potential impact, and this is what I think Mr. Englander and Mr. Bloominfield were both going to mention, that the new proposals for compliance that have been issued by the Justice Department, what, how that relates to our current practices, and what sorts of potential risks that may create as well. And so, that, Mr. Bloominfield, we'll go to Mr. Bloominfield.
Yeah, and so, along those lines with, we're talking about the Burn Justice Grant and the threats about that. I'd be curious if, if we had this applied before, we have ever applied, we have ever qualified for that money for the last twenty-five years, since Special Order Forty has been in place? Does Special Order Forty on its face violate what they're threatening?
Just based on the last report from the city attorney, I do not believe so, and also, I think with the Burn Grant Program, it's actually a formula grant, so the city... And also, I think with the Burne grant program, it's actually a formula grant, so the city would probably have continued to qualify. The issue is whether they've been able to comply with these new requirements. I can tell you that since this notice was issued last Tuesday, I had discussions with the city attorney, and they're actually reviewing the legality of these new requirements. Because again, it is a formula program, and most formula programs, the requirements are within the legislation, so only Congress can change the compliance requirements for most of these programs. So I know that they're looking at that as well.
I mean, that's one question, which is, they may not be able to legally do that because it's a formula, which is great, we should pursue that. But even if you were to take the threat at the face value, do we as a city, would we get caught in that net of the threat?
I think if it was legal and they could do it, based on my discussion with the city attorney, the city would have to make the decision that LAPD was going to change their policies.
But the policy we're talking about is the policy that's been in place since 1979?
Well, it's more of the policy of keeping people, you know, longer than they need to be kept in custody. It's an issue of how long you hold people and the information you share. And again, I'm not the expert, we'd have to have the city attorney here, that's my understanding. It's really that issue.
But that's been our policy for a long time, correct?
Correct.
I mean, so it's not, there's no new policy that this affects. This is affecting the policy that was in place under Daryl Gates.
And it's really affecting the issue of how long you can keep someone in custody. If they make bail, they can be released within the next hour, right? If it's not a serious crime. So that's really the issue.
And then, you know, we talked about the homeless impact of this budget. Is there any estimates as far as what it would do? You know, would it double, would it triple our homeless population?
I don't have estimates on that, but in terms of, you know, Medicaid, it's really one of the resources the county uses to provide services to residents of permanent supportive housing, so that would be a huge impact in terms of our efforts to be able to finance services. And they're also proposing cuts to the voucher program for Hackla. So that would be also an impact in terms of the rental subsidies that are needed as part of supportive housing development. So it would really have a detrimental impact in the sense that if the federal funding is not there to provide those services, then Measure H, right, the county measure, would have to fund more of those services. And in the end, what happens is just like with capital, you're able to fund fewer units, right? Because the services and the rental subsidies are not there. So it would have a huge impact, but no, I don't have estimates on what that would mean in terms of numbers.
And I realize it's a complicated question. I mean, I sort of assert in the question that I think it would double our homeless population, but I don't have the facts to back that up. But I'm curious, even if we didn't have Measure H, and I think it's an important, it's hard to make that estimate, I understand, because you don't know the direct impact, but there are a lot of people in the city and around the country that are very concerned about homelessness. And they may not see the connection between these kind of devastating cuts and the fact that there are more and more homeless people on our streets. And that's one of the things I hope, you know, I see it, and we see it because we deal with these numbers and these programs and what it means. But I would love to see some sort of report that really directly links that and says, you know, before Measure H and Measure Triple H, if we had these cuts, this would probably result in this many more homeless people. And then maybe we make up some of that difference with the, you know, we're kind of running in place or running fast to just get pushed back a little bit. But inasmuch as there's a way to quantify that and humanize that, I think that would help make our political case, I guess. And the other thing, I mean, this, looking at the House Budget Committee's report is very important, but it's one of those things, we're all going to write, you know, a sigh of relief because we're only getting cut, you know, 50% or 75% instead of 100%. But really, I mean, if anyone had proposed those cuts straight out, they would be really, you know, looked at as the devastating cuts that they are. So it's important that we not just compare them against, you know, the complete elimination of CDBG and all of those, but look at them for what they are. Because in any other year, even the House version of this bill would be considered just devastating for, you know, public safety net programs and for, critically, critical for Angelenos and homelessness and poverty and housing and all of those issues. So it's kind of a question, I'm trying to get to the humanizing it, but it's also kind of just a reaction. So.
Well, and I think it's a good point that maybe a little farther down the road, as we move towards budget, we might use this kind of a report as a template and then have a little bit more analysis as to each of the areas that are potentially threatened, what the actual service impacts will be, not just the dollar amount, but what does that mean in human terms?
And not just for us. I mean, one of the reasons I asked for the motion that led to a lot of this, and one of the motions, was because I had just been to Washington and was talking to our congressional members, and they were looking for bullet points on these programs, because they wanted to understand the real impacts on their constituents and our shared constituents. Because they look at the big federal numbers and they see the devastation, they can see what it hit, you know, how it hurts LA as a city. But what they were asking me for, and why I pushed this motion originally, one of the motions, was to try to get those narrowed down, to give them, to give us a better understanding of what we're in for, what we're potentially in for, and so we can prepare, but also to give ammunition to our representatives to fight against this and to fight, try to beef up that House budget a little bit more, even if it's to move us from a 50% cut to a 40% cut, which will be devastating, but that 10% could are our lives in the balance.
And Councilmember, on page five, we outline a few of the impacts departments reported, the city departments, but what we can do is do a better analysis on the homeless issue. Because so many of the sources of funding come from not only the city in terms of the capital, but also the county for services and Hackla for vouchers, it'll take us a little longer, but we could definitely try to do that for the next report, so you get a real sense of what that means.
And their portions are being cut, too?
Yes.
And so it's actually, if you just look at what the city hits, you're getting a minimized view of it.
Right.
Because we rely on this joint funding.
Mr. Kreutz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First question, I think I heard you referencing people that are potential criminals. I forgot the exact wording as part of what the Trump administration is trying to get us to comply with. If we have to provide information to help them deport people based on not convictions, but their potential as criminals, is there not some constitutional argument against that that we can make?
So I'm not an attorney, but I'm sure there would be, and that's probably why they're trying to amend the law, because you cannot provide this type of information now.
Hopefully, we can be aggressive on that front. What's the current status of the Trump administration's efforts to cut the parts specifically in response to our uncooperativeness in helping hand over immigrants for deportation?
At this point, I think the main effort there, or the status is really the notice they released last Tuesday on Edward Burne Memorial Justice Grant programs, which is really changing the guidelines for compliance for the grants. Again, they're formula grants, they come to the city through the state, the mayor's office administers the grant. And when they released this notice last Tuesday, they were basically giving everybody heads up that they were changing the rules for the grant, so that you'd have to be able to provide information and hold people longer if needed, to ensure that you can coordinate with Homeland Security on deportations. So that is really the first notice we've seen changing the guidelines on criminal justice grants.
So if they want to eliminate all of our grant funds, what steps do they still need to take to do that?
I actually don't think, at least from the city attorney's last report, they could legally do that. If they, if the city attorney finds that they can legally change the compliance requirements on this grant, the city received $1.8 million or $1.9 million in '16, '17 from this grant. If the city attorney finds that this is legal, then the city would have to decide whether they want to comply with these new rules to continue to receive that grant. But this is very specific to this grant.
Do you mean million or billion?
One million, 1.89 million the city received through this specific grant. But this is the only change in compliance requirements that has been received.
But in the long term, if the Trump administration wants to attempt to eliminate all of our grants, what are their steps to do that?
I would not know, but I can tell you that the city attorney's last report stated that they legally could not do that.
So what would their limitations be, in theory? Not that I believe they couldn't try well beyond whatever's legal, but...
Their limitations? Well, I guess it depends on the kind of grant, but I don't think they, I, to be honest, I think the city attorney would have to respond to that. In terms of formula grants, again, those are all governed by legislation, and so any change as to what, how you would get a formula grant would have to be changed by Congress. In terms of, you know, even the competitive grants, those, really, the premise for all of this money is determined by Congress, so I don't think it would be doable unless Congress decided they were going to eliminate grants for not just Los Angeles, but any other city that has some kind of special order where they're not sharing an individual's information with DOJ or DHS.
Right. I wouldn't imagine they would just go after us, but the many cities that are in the same circumstance.
Right. And again, Congress would have to approve that.
And again, I think it would be helpful to have a more detailed report back, specific to those requirements, because we will need to take a look at what we're in compliance with, what we're not. Because, for example, when it comes to holding someone before release, holding someone who's a convicted criminal before their release, we don't do that. We don't hold people who are convicts. We hold people awaiting arraignment before they're given to the sheriff and the jails. So where our practices, you know, correlate with those threats and where they diverge from what the administration wants are something I think that we're going to need to look at a little bit more closely. Mr. Englander.
Thank you. Been waiting way on this for some time. I invited our city attorney, Mike Fier, to a conference, Independent Cities Association, to speak as an expert on this very topic and on this very matter. And I'll tell you, from the whole conference, he was probably, with all due respect to all the other speakers throughout the entire conference, the best. He's got this down without any notes and was able to go through and articulate each and every sort of grant issue, where we're in compliance, where we may not be, what is really at risk versus not to the city of Los Angeles, and did a phenomenal job. And I would ask that, and I think it's critical that we have that discussion, and if there's any possible way to ask Mr. Fier here to walk us through a very similar presentation that he clearly spent a lot of time preparing for and knows this issue inside and out, and did a great job at that. I would ask, because we're all going through, well, these worst-case scenarios and what could happen and what kinds of authority or power and what kinds of money's on the table, and what are the impacts for communities and all these, and we can have, we can spin our wheels in conversation for a long time and live in fear and uncertainty and doubt. And I think that would help shed some light on the discussion of what are we really doing? What aren't we doing? What are we complying with? What aren't we complying with? And what's out there in the space and what this administration is putting this fear into our belief system? And how do we program that for that in our budget? I would ask, I think the very next step should be, not the office, and you kept referring to the city attorney's office, which is absolutely true, those are the ones that are going to have to interpret this and find out what we're in compliance for and what we're not. He's got it down. I would ask respectfully if we could, and I would, Mr. Chair, if we could invite him to give us a very similar, it was a very quick, by the way, it wasn't that long, but it was boiled down and very simple, and I think it would help guide us a little more.
So it's a worthwhile suggestion, I think, to maximize the benefit of it, what I would like to do is get the supplemental report back here to this committee. When we report that report forward to council, then I would ask the city attorney to come to full council, so that all members get the benefit of hearing that presentation, because it obviously goes much beyond the limitations of the Budget Committee's jurisdiction as well. So if we could do that, have you worked with the city attorney's office, obviously, on the Burne grant component of the report? And then when we report it forward to council, we'll ask the city attorney, we'll try to coordinate with his schedule to be able to have him attend as well.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, members? Thank you very much. This is a very, very helpful report. So if I wasn't clear, what I'd like to do is ask the CAO to supplement this report with a review of the budget proposal that was recently approved by the Budget Committee of the House, as well as the new immigration compliance requirements of the DOJ for the Burne JAG grant, and produce an updated report that considers the impacts of those working with the city attorney, with those developments on the city as well. So do you think you could turn that around fairly quickly, since you're already aware of all the issues?
Yeah, I think fairly quickly.
Couple of weeks?
Yeah.
Two weeks? Two weeks. If we can get that back here in two weeks, then that'll enable us to get quickly before council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, also, did you want to include as a report back, the request from Councilmember Blumenfeld regarding a report back to show the impact of cuts on the possible homeless population before and after the cuts?
So I want to see that. But will that be, will that be something that you can quickly turn around? Because my thinking was, as you were saying it, if we get this update back, then we can highlight the features on that, that we want a deeper analysis on of actual impact, and that that we would develop over the course of coming months as we move towards budget. But Mr. Blumenfeld's point is well-taken about people in Washington kind of needing that ammunition right now, so...
So that's fine, I think we can include it, it shouldn't be...
Terrific. That would be, if you can do that, that would be great. I just don't want to hold everything up if that's going to take six months to do, but it...
No, it shouldn't.
Okay, terrific. Then, yes, it shall.
Okay.
Anything else, members? All right. That will be the action of the committee. Thank you very much for your good work.
And they intend us to move this forward to council?
Well, we're going to get the supplemental report back, so I think if, we're going to get the supplemental report in two weeks, so we'll hold it until then, and then we'll send the full package to council.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anything else before the committee? Seeing no further items, we are adjourned.